Got it today. Forward and under if you want me to.
It's nine o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting of the Cottington County Commissioners to order. If you would please rise, we'll have Commissioner Waterman lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, number two is a call for public comment. If anybody would like to make public comment, they can do so in person or use the phone numbers six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. And if you have a cellphone, could you please silence it? And if you need to take a call, we'd appreciate if you do it in the hallway. Thank you. Item three, is there any conflict of interest?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Number four, we need a motion to approve the October eighth agenda.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number five, we need a motion to approve the October first twenty twenty-four minutes.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen to approve the minutes. Is there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number six, need a motion to authorize Chair to sign the burn ban resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine that was previously passed on ten one of twenty-four.
Second.
Procedurally, when you put a burn ban on, it needs to be by resolution. So to make it legit, okay, so Johnson made the motion and Van Duzen, okay.
Okay, motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen to sign the burn ban. Any further discussion? Hey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number seven, need action to approve the plot resolution. We have Luke.
Good morning, Commissioners. And I have this plat of Ellie Mack condition in the southeast quarter, section twenty-one, township one eighteen, north range fifty-one. That version of Waverly Township.
Now it's green, that's what that means. So we're in section twenty-one, Waverly Township, northeast of Waverly, as the crow flies about a little over a mile. More or less, one mile north and one mile east is where this is at. So all we're doing is the Johnsons are plating off their home site. As is allowed by existing farmstead exemption that was issued the be the twenty-fifth of September. The conditional use was issued and then plat recommendation followed there shortly after, and all they did is platted around. Basically where the tree belts are, there is one outbuilding that is sitting there outside of it and farm site, but goes with the rest of the farmland, but that's it.
Hope to approve.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable to approve this plat resolution. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you all.
Yep, thanks.
Where are you gonna be this morning, Luke?
I'll be over at my office. North of town.
Okay. Thank you.
A little while.
Okay, let's move down to our monthly reports. First we'll have our community health nurse.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning Cody.
All right, I sent in stat numbers for July through September for our developmental screenings, scripts that we issued. Immunizations, depression screenings, fluoride treatments in car seats, staff training. Both Kai and I were approved to begin taking classes through Babbel to learn basic Spanish. So we've been working on that with a few others in our office. We use an interpreting service. In November, all of the public health staff will be attending training on adverse childhood events that will take place in town at our regional meeting. Immunizations, we completed a sixth grade immunization clinic at the intermediate school and kindergarten and sixth grade immunization clinic at Florence. So you can see a little bit of the uptake of immunizations in August because both of those were completed then. Flu shots are available. So if anyone has private insurance, they're welcome to call our office. And we also take people that don't have any insurance at all. So our state employee flu clinics start Thursday this week. And we're working with the sheriff's department to offer hepatitis B vaccines to their employees that are needing it for their compliance as well. And we started our school immunization audit. So we audit all kindergarten, sixth grade and transfer students in all of Cottington County. We've done a lot of our school services already. We have three of them already completed. We have the remaining two that will be done this month. I'm teaching a teen outreach program to two schools in Cottington County. And that teaches stuff about education and success, life leadership, social health, teaching healthy behaviors and relationships. So that's a fourteen week class. One school I will start in November and the other one I will start in January. So I'll be going, I'll be going every Tuesday for that. Community involvement, I continue to go to the interagency meetings that are held at the welfare office and I'm also with the action team that's working on a centralized location. I'll also be attending a meeting with the counselors at the public school to talk about students that will be eligible. And then I went to the employee fair at the casino to talk about our pregnancy care program and did flu shots last Thursday. So.
Busy.
Yeah. Questions? Awesome. All right.
Thank you.
Our, we have a new addition to the office. Is it working all right?
Yeah. Yeah. Team's going good?
Very, very good.
Yeah.
By the way, for the rest of you, if you don't know this by now, Miss, Miss Cody will become Mrs.
Oh, yeah.
In the very near future.
Yes.
Next week.
Next Saturday.
Next Saturday.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Never seen her turn that way before.
A lot, it's a lot to do, but.
Yeah.
But she's been pretty quiet.
That's right.
So I thought I better publicly.
Thanks. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
The last name?
Storm.
Mrs. Storm.
Mrs. Storm.
We'll be approached by a storm.
Yes. Yeah, you're right. Awesome.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move down to on the extension of Jody, if you wanna fill us in.
Morning, Jody.
Morning. It is National 4H Week from October seventh through the twelfth. Youth are beyond ready for their future by learning life skills they can use for a lifetime. So beyond ready is the national theme that they're using all over the United States and beyond. So we have a 4H Spirit Week, just like a homecoming week. So we had some Membership Monday, hoping everyone would enroll or re-enroll. Yesterday, we had some new ones even too. So we have some things throughout the week and those are posted on our Cottington County 4H Facebook page. I'll be attending the National 4H Conference next week in Boise, Idaho. I will be presenting with the Progressive Ag Safety Day, like our Farm Safety Day camps, and I'll be presenting with them at one of the workshops. And then I'm also co-chair elect for the National 4H Workforce Development Working Group. So working with how we can get more things with our workforce. And I'm working with people from all across the United States on that. And we meet via Zoom a lot of times. So. 4H Award applications were due yesterday for, and their record books, if they're applying for awards and our recognition event again is Sunday, October twenty-seventh at two o'clock and the leaders will be judging those tomorrow. We're planning for clover buds is underway and as we were researching how many kids turned eight this year. Twenty-five from last year, eight now. So they'll be joining Big 4H. So that's half of our clover buds from last year will be joining 4H. Casey's, I went to Casey's the other day and I felt like, wow, there's something here for 4H. I didn't even know about it. So any large pizza purchase equals a dollar donation to 4H now through November fifth. So I just happened to see it when I went to Casey's. So I haven't even heard from the national about that till now. Andy and Arden Ramel designed the shirt and it was a contest through the state. And they were sold through the South Dakota 4H Leaders at the state fair. So they're, they're twins, 4Hers from our county. So.
Cool.
So that was kinda neat too. So I will be posting a video. I can't, couldn't send it anywhere because it was too big. But I had two youth that are intermediate school students who are speaking to intermediate school. And they made a video and we're gonna post it this afternoon on our kind of county 4H Facebook page because I can't send it anywhere because it's too big with everything on it. But the little call rep girls put it together and stuff. So they're gonna put it on that intermediate page too to promote 4H.
How's Roman looking today?
Um, it is up from last, it was up last year. So that's good. It's growing. So we just gotta find all these little eight-year-olds or new, some clubs and keep them active. So. Yeah.
Very good.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Jody.
Have a safe trip. That's great.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, we'll have Brenda give us the auditor's report.
All right. Good morning. As of yesterday at five o'clock, we've had one thousand sixty-one individuals vote. Back in twenty twenty-two, actually on October eleventh, there were six hundred and two. So you can see that we're busy. So it's good. I have also mailed out the liquor license renewals. That will be on the agenda for approval on the November seventh agenda. Still, you know, working for the taxes payable in twenty twenty-five on the side. So just keep them busy.
Wow, well, that's good. We're getting good voter turnout already. That's.
What was that, thousand twenty-one?
Thousand sixty-one.
Thousand sixty-one. Better yet.
Yeah, it's
good.
It's busy, but it's good. Glad to see everyone's getting out and taking time to do that. So. I don't have anything else. That's it. Just busy with voting.
Okay, let's move down to the Community Service Office Director, Sarah.
Hi.
Hi, Sarah.
Good morning.
Morning.
Here is the data. I'll let you guys pass it around. It should be.
Perfect.
There we. Okay, go ahead. All right. Yeah, there might be an extra because I can't count apparently. Okay. Um, so yeah, here's our data, which we just, they were late getting it to us. So I just emailed them this morning. They just sent it over. So I haven't even really had a chance to look it over. But you can see September was a pretty busy month for contacts, the highest in the past year as far as the number of individuals we served and the services that we've provided with that. We continue to get busier and busier, which is great because we're meeting more community needs. It's just a lot of, a lot of things are going on and happening. So that's been good. Obviously, the most of our time is spent with case management. We have provided the funeral assistance. Again, our annual budget is forty thousand. So we're good on that budget for that with around twelve thousand this year. And then some transportation assistance. Those are mostly bus tickets for people who end up in Watertown and want to return home or return to where they came from. So that's a majority of what the transportation is. And then the mental health, rent assistance, emergency housing costs are the other ones. So. Any questions about any of that? Okay. I don't have a whole lot to report this month. It's, we've been busy, but I've been traveling a little bit more too. For the cares or the South Dakota cares ERA funds that Carrie billed for three thousand five hundred dollars for administrative fees that the county was reimbursed for that program. Our impact or CHW program, we had billed two thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars for the month of September. That is actually one of the areas we've been really trying to work on. I've been working with my staff and we've met with some state people on how we can increase the Medicaid reimbursement. And we're going to continue to have some conversations and work with some community efforts to increase that. I've given them some target numbers so that by like April, May of next year, that positions are covered fully through Medicaid with that. Some other things that we, I went to the state South Dakota Association of County Welfare Officials meeting at the state county meeting that went while we presented on our community health worker program. And, and then I was asked to be the, take a lead in the statewide task force regarding mental health and the impact on counties. And so the state Eric Erickson, who is this?
He's.
Yeah, thank you. Has a, yeah, so he has asked me to lead that initiative. And so I just wanted to make sure that you guys as commissioners are okay with me being part of that and taking that role with that.
That, I mean, one of the things I talked to Eric a little bit about that yesterday. It, it sounds like it could be useful, I think, not just from the county perspective, but definitely help from the county perspective, but also as we look at things like, say, the state alone there, like, say, as, say, bullying too. But it just also just now they've added a way that they can't stop, you know, those kind of work into some of those issues as well, which is, is with all of this state figure out stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, really looking at how we can serve people better and keep them out of jail. Better, those kinds of things. So. Um, we, I did attend two conferences last week, the Building Healthy Wealthy Communities, which was by the Department of Health. That was a really great conference with some great connections. And then the Early Learner South Dakota Conference, which is about childcare. They actually partnered that with the Economic Development Conference. And so it was a nice perspective, looking at childcare from an economic development perspective. This week, we have the interagency meeting Thursday at nine, and that's gonna be on Zoom. Our topic will be about the jail and then the reaching rural work that we're doing as a group. Um, just a agency of the month for Cottington connects is Watertown Cares. You know, they support emergency housing and they have been full, they're open one year now and they have been full from the time they opened with a waiting list of twenty to forty people at any given time. So emergency housing continues to be a need that we have in our community. Speaking of housing, we'll be holding a housing summit in November, maximizing excellence is, has been contracted through Watertown Development Company and they're, they will facilitate that event and will be part of that. We know we need to look at some other, like the next step from emergency housing. Where do we move people from emergency housing to help get them stabilized and into long-term housing? So we'll be part of that. The childcare is continuing to move forward. The monastery has gotten some great donations and support for that. They will be holding an after four event on November fourteenth for the childcare. So everybody is welcome to attend that after four event, November fourteenth at the Mother of God monastery for that.
That's after four.
After. After four. Yeah, it's a chamber event for after four. I think it goes four to six. Yeah, four to six. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Um, also for childcare, the chamber is hosting an Absent Haps event for daycare providers on October twenty-second. And that is intended for anybody who's an in-home daycare provider or interested in being an in-home daycare provider. Everybody is welcome. The goal of the evening is just to be a fun, supportive night to support increasing in-home providers in our community and, and recognizing them as the profession that they are. So. And then just check out Cottington connects for more events and information in our community. WWW dot Cottington connects dot com is our community website that has all of that information in it. So. Any other questions or anything?
Do you have the, the date for that housing?
The housing summit is, I should have written it down.
Is it November?
It is.
It's in, it's in November.
It is November.
Wanted to get it on my calendar.
Yes, we will, I will get you that invite. We're hoping to, I was, the invites should be out, will be out this week. I think they're just finalizing some of that. I wanna say it's like November sixteenth or it's that week. I, I'm pretty sure it's November sixteenth, but we'll get you the invite for sure. Yep. Yes.
Great.
Yeah, and thank you for representing that. And yeah. Perfect.
Yep. Any other questions for Sarah? All right.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Okay, moving down to number nine, need action to authorize to accept a three-year business internet service contract at the extension complex. Steve, if you wanna.
Yes, um, usually mid cotton, so we are a three-year contract with them on the internet throughout at the building. It is up due up now. One thing that I have done for a change was our internet was two hundred megabytes before. I'm looking at upgrading it to five hundred. When they live stream for the auctions at the, for the farm show, it, they've had some bog downs and having it really slow. So I'm assuming that during the farm show, there's a lot of other people to get access to the internet. So I think it's been bogging it down. So my request is to up it to five hundred, which is only thirty dollars a month more from going from two hundred to five hundred. So.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman to approve the new three-year contract. Any other questions?
Is that a hundred and sixty-five dollars a month?
Yeah, it'll be probably approximately, they got some fees, actually some taxes onto it. Currently, right now, I think I'm paying like a hundred and twenty-three dollars for it. So it'd be about thirty dollars. So probably close to that hundred and fifty-three ninety-two, what's on the front page.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down to number ten, we need action to approve the auditor's account with treasure and note monthly registered deeds.
All right. So you have that information in your packet, all the cash on hand, assets, general ledger balances with the custodial fees that go to the schools, township, cities and towns. On the last business day is September, and then the other sheet just is a breakdown of the actual money that was counted the last day of the month. And the registered deeds fees for the month of September was thirty thousand nine thirty-three forty.
Move to.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable to approve this auditor's account with treasures and the registered deeds. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, number eleven, need a motion to approve the job description for the highway superintendent position. Natalie?
Hope to approve.
I'll say it. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable and well.
Good morning Commissioners. So you have an updated job description in front of you. It's been, I believe, twenty-four years since this has been updated, according to the copy I could find. So. Yeah, so just a few things to note. Mostly it's just formatting changes to a new, the one that we're using now for a format. And just clarification of the position, yeah, not very many changes. And this goes obviously with the next item on the agenda as well. If you have any questions?
Nope.
It was pretty, it's all.
Well done. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we need a motion to advertise and hire a highway superintendent to fill the vacancy due to Rick Hartley's retirement.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen. Any further questions or?
We will advertise internally and externally and get it posted and have it open, I guess, until filled, depending on what we get for candidates. And this is a pay grade seventy position. So the starting wage for this position is eighty-four thousand six hundred five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Say that, I'm on one more.
Yep, eighty-four thousand six hundred five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Any further questions or?
Nope. What, we should probably talk a little bit, you know, fill them till, open until it's filled. Should we talk a little bit about maybe if we get four applications or ten applications, when should we cut it off?
Right. Yeah, good point.
You know.
Yeah.
Until it's open, because if we cut it off and then someone wants to apply.
Right. I mean, if you wanna set a specific date, that's fine too. You know, if you wanna just leave it open for two weeks or if you wanna open it, leave it open for three weeks. Rick's retirement, as you know, is the end of this month is what he had notified us. So I don't know that we'll be able to get it filled before he leaves. So, you know, might be looking at appointing an interim in the meantime or something too. But um, yeah, I guess it's kinda up to you on a timeline.
Leave it open for now.
Okay.
See what kind of response we get for applications.
I agree. We don't know exactly what the response is gonna be, you know.
I just don't wanna leave you hanging.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
We can always come back at a meeting and announce that we're gonna be closing it like in two weeks or something like that.
Yeah.
Good applications. And that way, you need you know, people that are waiting.
And that's fine, just that we have.
Right.
And we walk out of here, we know what we're doing.
Right. Our most recent opening that we've had in the treasurer's office, we received a lot of applications for that. I mean, so we have a lot. And I, I don't know about this. Obviously, the requirements are a little higher. This is a higher level position and, you know, we're looking for somebody that has, you know, experience in, you know, many of these areas.
Where do you plan on advertising?
We go with job service and post it there and then we post it online on Indeed. And if you want, we can do other advertising methods, but we've had good success with those two without any, and those are both no cost to the county then to advertise.
If we go through the state, I mean, I, I'm not saying this, but you know, we could steal from some other county.
Well, if you put it in the, isn't there the statewide magazine, could we put it in there?
Contact Chris.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
That might be a good.
The job service, that's the state's website.
Right. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Kind of get more applications from Indeed though.
We have been.
Nationwide.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thanks Commissioners.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, number thirteen. Action to approve resolution to lift ban on open burning.
I, I talked to Andrew just before the meeting here and, and he confirmed that in that memo that we got to lift the burn ban because of all the recent rains. I don't know, I had to kinda chuckle and I read that and I was wondering what rock that person had been under and then it's just a standard procedure that we just leave it on the agenda. And I don't, do we need to act on it because of?
It'll just die. There's no motion.
Yep.
They just leave it on the agenda for right after it rains or snows, whichever comes first.
Well, it's a good reminder and it's got people talking and it's got people aware.
Yep.
It's, it's just been a lot of fires around and the, the possibility of fires gets greater every day that it doesn't rain.
Yeah, and, and so it's, it just makes people more aware, be more careful. And you don't really know how many it prevents.
Yeah. Okay, moving down to fourteen, note Native American Day Cottington County office closures.
That will be Monday, October fourteenth. Cottington County offices will be closed. That is next Monday.
Okay. Number fifteen, action to approve abatement application.
Not today. No abatements.
Action to approve claims for payment.
Yeah, you have your list, your list of all the claims for the month. I don't know if there was any that jumped out at you that you want. List of all the claims for the month. I don't know if there was any that jumped out at you, that you want um government buildings that still receiving um claims from Johnson for the HVAC upgrade. We got a bill for another one out, the extension for the fire suppression system. Uh, road and bridge, the road south of town that's being regraded. So uh, you see your total down there, but the pass through uh that will go to the state of South Dakota. That amount is six hundred eighty-seven thousand sixty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Leaving the total for one million eighty-five thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-five cents is what is actual county claims this month.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable, to approve the claims for payment. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
No budget supplements, no personnel.
No personnel, so we'll move down. Is there?
Just one travel, uh, individual from Director of Legalization Office to attend executive Executive Board and Education Committee meeting. You have all that information.
Of the prove.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable to approve the traveler request. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Number twenty. Any uh. Possible quorum dates?
So. Two public um visit days for the jail was this afternoon, starting at three, and then next week. Uh, the fifteenth, starting in three, so the sheriff and it is uh, the jail staff, Matt and company are gonna be tipping open, opening the jail public tours because it's opportunity for the voters to get educated. Um, for the cutting to county bond issue that's on the ballot um to, to fund a, the possible construction of a new jail. Um, so that people can have, go on with eye, and go with eyes, and open and well informed. Um, and then also, this is a couple weeks up, but just maybe people could put it on the calendar as well. Um, on the twenty-first, there's a group of concerned citizens um that are gonna be presenting on the jail as well. So that's gonna be at L A T C. Um, that's in the evening, so I wanna say it's at five thirty, but um. I'll, I'll keep folks posted on that week, so.
Any other? Dates, Myron, you have any in your?
No, I don't uh. I'm gonna go.
Okay. Let's move down to twenty-one. Is there any old business? Seeing none, is there any new business? Hey, now it's uh, number twenty-three, it's time for the open. Or public comment? Let's hear it. See any public commenter, hear the phones. Is there any uh commissioner comments? Uh, go, go ahead, Commissioner Gable first.
Mr. Chair, just uh, just to correct what I just said, so the, the presentation on the twenty-first of October by the group of concerned citizens about the jail. That's at um, seven P M at L A T C. Um, just so folks wanna put that on the calendar, it's another opportunity to get informed about um the jail. Um, and then um, also the, uh, the city council last night passed a resolution in support of, of the county's efforts to deal with the uh, the problem of our jail, so appreciate that.
I was gonna say that.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Gable. Any other commissioner comments? Okay, um. Is there, that, that, are we, eh, no, no need for, okay.
What?
No need for executive session. Hallelujah, things happen. Okay, um.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned.
Take advantage of that.
Okay.
Embracing myself.